So we'll call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. It is Tuesday, October 10th. It is now 8:33. We're following an HR meeting that ran over a little bit this evening. And we will start with a roll call, please, Ms. Van Twyper.
Mrs. Oden.
Here.
Dr. Murataki.
Here.
Ms. Van Twyper is here. Mr. Halliwell?
Here.
Mr. Mosher?
I'm here.
Mrs. Ziem.
Here.
Ms. Hohensie.
I'm here.
Mr. Kaufman.
Here.
Mr. Farrington.
Here.
We have Dr. Mosley. We have Dr. McKinney. We have Ms. Fitzpatrick. Mr. Donovan. Ms. Thomasetti is not here, but Mr. McIntyre is here. We have a full house.
Ms. O'Gara.
Oh, Ms. O'Gara. I always miss someone. Sorry about that.
Okay. So it's going to be kind of entertaining this evening. We have three members calling in. We do have a quorum present. So we'll be trying to keep track of all of you and input. And of course, all the votes will be by roll call. We'll continue with the prayer with Ms. Van Twyper and the pledge of allegiance. Mrs. Oden, please.
Sorry about this. Where'd it go? Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Moving right on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Ziem. Seconded by Mr. Hoffman.
Hoffman.
You're copying me. It's my fault.
It's her fault. She started it.
Sorry.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. I did it on the first one. Everything has to be roll call.
Mrs. Oden.
Aye.
Yes.
Dr. Murataki?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyper votes yes. Mr. Halliwell?
Mr. Halliwell?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Any communications outside the consent agenda? Seeing none, public question, comment, period limited items on the agenda? We see we have a participant rising out of the audience and coming down. We ask only that you give her name and address, please, sir.
I'm glad you reminded me. Anna Marqu for Geelong Lane, president of the National Teachers Union, here to speak on behalf of the para contract. It passed my membership with 121 yays, 17 nays, one vote was put in the box with nothing indicated for a total of 139 participants. We had a lively discussion, actually, in this room about the contract, and then it ultimately passed. I think we made a lot of good progress in this contract. Like I told the membership, we had some problems in the past. We're working to correct those. It is unrealistic to correct those in one contract. We made headway to do that, and I'm very pleased with the direction that negotiations went with the board team as well as my own team. And I look forward to having, hopefully, a positive outcome this evening to send on to the Board of Alderman. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, public comment? Guess that brings us to superintendent's comments. Dr. Mosley.
Good evening. Couple things. It's been a very busy, I would say, beginning month of October. So part of what I've been doing is that I've been getting out to all of the schools. And to do that, you have to time it kind of right. So you get, in this case, I call the trifecta. So about a week ago, I actually had an opportunity to attend all of the middle school open houses. That is, the Elm Street Middle School Open House, the, I should know this, Fairground Middle School Open House, and Penachak. Thank you. I just blew my mind there. Penachak Middle School. So with all that said, it's been a great experience to meet the students. It's been great to meet the faculty. It's, you know, getting into classrooms. I saw some nice displays, and it was a tremendous opportunity. Today, I actually did a couple of meetings. Speaking of parent connections and meeting, I was at, it's called the PAWS here. I'm sorry, it's not here, it's at the South. Excuse me. The PAWS Parent Group. I met with him for an hour. We, I shouldn't say "we." I mostly talked with him about the schools. I talked with him about the opportunities that kids had and will have in our schools. So it's been a great opportunity for me to get out and talk with the community at large. Today, we had our principal meeting. We talked about building partnerships with organizations. We had a presentation by representative from Barnes &amp; Nobles, talking about opportunities for fundraising, talked about opportunities for our elementary schools to have guest readers come in to promote books, but also, more importantly, I'd say promote literacy within our schools. I think it's important, it doesn't matter what a student is reading, whether it is Sports Illustrated, a magazine, or anything like that, read something. Get out there and read. So I think this is a great opportunity for us to definitely continue those partnerships. And I know that was mentioned earlier today with the CTE program interviews for the director. The other presentation we had, it was from the YMCA. We had representatives out, talking about after-school programming partnerships, many different opportunities for our kids to get involved with community outreach. One of the things that I said I would start at the beginning of the school year, and I'd follow through on that. Last week, I had my first, I call it, I guess I'll just call it for now, superintendent's conversations with coffee, coffee conversations. I haven't quite figured out that acronym. The coffees and conversations being taken up by everyone, so I'm trying to come up with a better name, like dialogue with donuts, or something that is unique. So I'm still working on that. Any rate, I had an opportunity to, I started deliberately at the Lead Street School. And I really wanted to, you know, there's no secret that there's been some, you know, controversy over there. And I really found that engaging, to talk with teachers, to listen to their perspectives, to get a sense of where they were coming from, what they were looking for in their leadership team moving forward. And by far, I just want to publicly thank those teachers for coming out and meeting with me, being candid with me, understanding where they're coming from, and more importantly, really sharing with me what they need and what they expect to move forward in their teaching endeavors. So I appreciate that as well. I share this with you because I really mean this, and I really believe that the momentum in this district is really changing. And it's changing, and I believe in part because of the great things that our teachers, our parents, and I would say the board is doing as well. And I mean that. And I mean that in a sense, I had an opportunity, what I would consider my colleague, the Manchester Superintendent, actually reached out to me for a variety of reasons. And one of the things he had, he shared with me is that, he said, you know, "Dr. Mosley, let's get together, let's talk about our districts, let's talk about some shared partnership. You do some great things around the middle school, you do some great things around getting your high school kids involved and connected with the junior colleges, you do some nice things around." And he just went on and on and on about how our resources are really ones that they really wanted to get a sense of how we're doing it, and more importantly, bring it to Manchester. So with that said, again, I just want to commend the teachers and the parents and the students for what they do in this district. More importantly, when I say things are changing, it's because now, in my sense, is that I believe that there are still great things that are going to come about, there are still great things around partnership, not just with businesses, but I would say one thing, that we have partnerships with other communities, partnerships with other districts, districts that reflect our demographics and what we do as well. So the superintendent and I, his name, I'm sorry, Superintendent Vargas and I are going to schedule some time where we can meet and come up with some ideas where there could be some shared cost of presentations, but more importantly, a shared, a nice opportunity for us to share our pedagogy, share some of our things we do well and certain things we can improve on. So I wanted to thank our principals for reaching out to Manchester. I want to thank the Ministry of Assistance, tires right there, Garth and Donna for their work, and certainly Dana for reaching out for doing some investigation around our salaries. And it's just been a nice thing to see our district progress through. I will get to, later on in the day, I mean, sorry, later on in the meeting, I'll talk a little bit about governance, talk a little bit about some of my conversation with EAB and the New Hampshire School Association, School Committee Association as well. I'll talk a little bit about that later.
Okay. Board member response to superintendent's comments. Start over here, Mr. Kaufman.
Yes. I wanted to thank Dr. Mosley for the outreach to Manchester, or I guess whoever initiated that dialogue. As a region, we have, what, Hillsborough County has a big chunk of the population of New Hampshire. So between those two large cities, we really have a lot of resources. So to begin to start really thinking regionally, and they have a tech center also, so I think that's, that's great. Can't say enough. Thank you both, to both superintendents and everybody who is involved with that.
Mrs. Ziem.
I would just like to add, it's encouraging to see that we are reaching out not only to other schools, but to groups, to businesses, to, I actually believe that Dr. Mosley has the incredible ability to make time for everybody. I don't know how he does it, I'll tell you that honestly, but I'm impressed by it and I'm delighted by it. It's something that we haven't seen enough of, and so I'm looking forward to that mountain again. Thank you.
Mrs. Oden.
Oh, thank you. I just want to thank him for getting into the schools to have the coffee and conversations. I think that's important. I think the parents, teachers, and the community will appreciate that as it goes along too. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mosher?
Yes, I think it's a very good idea that we are reaching out as we are to the different districts, like Manchester. Because I'm sure that there are many things that we can share. We can share, you know, areas in which we have, you know, accomplished a good deal and other areas where we are not accomplishing very much, which is normal for, you know, districts of our size. We can't always be perfect, but we can try. And I think the best way to do this is to get together and share some of the other things where we have seen accomplishment and those places where we have not. And where we have not, why? Has there been something wrong with the program, or something wrong in the way that the district handled the situation? We can accomplish much by doing a lot of listening and by asking a lot of questions and by letting everybody know that we really are on the same page when it comes to education and accomplishing great things for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Hohensie.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the superintendent not only for reaching out, which I'm delighted to hear, but I'm also even more delighted that he's telling the board and the public what's going on, so we can participate by listening and knowing that these conversations are being made. Just sharing that with us is huge, and I'm delighted that he's leading our district.
Thank you. Ms. Van Twyper?
Far be it from me, Dr. Mos, not to agree. I love the idea that you get your face out there amongst all the students, the children, and students and staff. I agree with that wholeheartedly. Thank you so much for doing.
Dr. Murataki, comments?
I was also kind of tickled when I heard about your meeting, a chance encounter, whatever, with the superintendent at Manchester. We just recently had a discussion on career technical education, and we'll be talking about that a little bit more later, I think. But one of the things I wanted to mention was that a few years back, when I went to Dr. Virginia Berry, who was the previous commissioner of education here, and I said, you know, "Dr. Berry, we'd like to actually get an apprenticeship program started here." And she said to me, she said, you know, she said, "Nashville already has a lot of the pieces put together, but the guys that seem to have it, you know, furthest ahead with the real apprenticeship program is Manchester." So despite the fact that if you look at Manchester and Nashville, it's almost like we're a tale of two cities.
I agree.
One piece of common ground that they could definitely give us a leg up on would be a discussion on how do they do their apprenticeship program? Because at least a few years back, Dr. Berry thought that they were the exemplar that we could look to. Just a thought. Thank you. I'm done.
Okay. Coming to the student members, first, I neglected to say that Ms. Thomasetti communicated with me late in the afternoon that she realized she had a conflict. These meetings, as everybody knows, usually are on Monday. And Tuesday, it conflicted. She had a field hockey game, and she was unable to attend. And then, just to talk about our other student representative, as I think everybody got to see the email from Mr. McIntyre. He thought he might be late, but he was able to join us. He was being inducted into the John Locke Social Studies Honor Society, and congratulations, Cameron. So with that intro, do you have anything you'd like to comment on?
Yeah, I do. Two weeks ago, our Student Voice group at South hosted students from other schools to come in and shadow students for Blocks II, E Block, and Third Block. So we had schools, Pelham, Alverne, Nashville North, and BG. They all sent students to observe what kind of goes on in our school day to day and how we can make it better. I just wanted to say that we got a lot of positive comments from everybody involved there. Some of the things were how engaging our teachers are in class, the relationships between students and teachers, how we have this kind of relationship that supports this very comfortable and safe learning environment. And then throughout our visit also, we got feedback on the benefits and usefulness of E Block, like it's a great time for clubs, homework, time to meet with your teachers that some kids don't have at their school. And then we also got good feedback on block scheduling too, which was that the more consistent class time, the longer periods really foster this better learning instead of racing you into a 50-minute period, that sort of thing. And then, just generally, overall, we, South was said to have this friendly, welcoming vibe to their school, like everyone knew each other, and everyone was happy in the halls, everyone talked to each other. So this, I think this really made, at least, South for, on my part, look, or on all of our parts, look very good. So I just want to let you know that based on this, it's clear that we're doing great things in this district.
Great. Obviously, good to hear. Thank you, Cameron.
Can I ask Cam a quick question?
Sure.
You were talking about the comments the kids made, where, and I, over the years, I've heard some people say that the E Block, the longer time, doesn't accommodate every subject, but it does a kind of like automotive and cosmetology. Some of them, you absolutely have to have it. Was there any discussion in that area about some were better suited to it than others?
With regards to like, different classes in E Block?
Which classes were best for E Block and which class, you know, which, not E Block, but which classes were best for the 90 minutes as opposed to the?
Yeah. So they definitely thought that classes like, you know, sort of, you know, generally like English-type things, that definitely needed more time because they, you really need time to get into a conversation. Like, a lot of our classes are discussion-based, so if you're in a 50-minute period, oftentimes you can get into a good discussion, and then it just kind of ends because the class ends. So we have that. And then, again, with, I don't know how many CTE classes they saw, but I could probably say that CTE classes, you do need that time, because I remember in middle school, when I did tech ed, it was like, you got into class and then you raced to set things up, and then you have about like 25 to 30 minutes to work, and then you got, you have to pack up. So with automotive classes, that 90 minutes, definitely, that, it works a lot better.
So the math, was those, I'm sorry, man, was there no, math is one that I've heard some people say that was too long.
Yeah, so one, one thing that we heard was, we didn't really talk about if it was too long or not, but one of the things that did come up was, students could sometimes lose focus after 90 minutes if they're, like, you know, in a math class and they're just doing examples off the board, or just working on their homework, that type of thing. But overall, I think it was decent, yeah.
That's, that was what I was looking for. Thank you.
Okay. And I just realized I didn't offer Mr. Halliwell an opportunity, board member response to superintendent's comments. Bob, do you have anything?
Mr. Halliwell, do you have a comment about the superintendent's remarks?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Thank you. And we'll, nothing new on committee on budget. Committee on Finance and Operations, we'll have Mr. Kaufman just give us an update on what's going on there.
We have a meeting tomorrow night at District Office at 6:30.
Okay. And Committee on Policy, Ms. Van Twyper.
Thank you. Mr. Farrington, Policy Committee had not met since.
Sorry, can I jump in there?
Oh, yes, go ahead. I'm sorry, Bob.
Bill?
Go ahead, Mr. Halliwell.
I'm sorry, there's an annoying delay here, so, and I just wanted to point out, tomorrow night's meeting, we'll, on finance, we'll be covering both a little bit of solar energy, which we've been looking into, different companies that have been coming in, and then also sort of the initial construction estimates for Elm Street and Mount Pleasant, in case people are interested.
Okay. Thank you. You were, yes, you're back.
Oh, I'm back? Okay. We didn't, we have not met since the last board meeting, but we will be meeting on October 17th, and we have a full agenda that night. We are going to be talking about the HR committee change that they requested for, for being able, the all committee members can interview or attend the interview, participate in the interviews for principal, assistant principal and above. I hope I got that outright. We're also going to be discussing the policy on the admission of foreign exchange and its associated, its associated procedure to help clarify, make more information about how to go about admitting foreign exchange students. We also have the student attendance policy on the tablet, on the agenda, and then we have, let's see, what else? Five. If, oh, I know, the background investigation and criminal checks. So we'll be discussing those. So if you're interested and have concerns about those, you should be coming to the meeting. And then, if we have time, we were going to review some of the policies on naming buildings and things that we were not going to be, we're not, we didn't cover the last meeting. I think I forgot one too. Was it the one policy on request from the superintendent about, I can't remember which one that was. Oh, KHB, advertising, sponsorship, and recognition in schools. So we do have a full agenda. The psychology proposed policy has been moved to November in light of the fact that Ms. Hohensie is out of the country right now, and she requested it. And then also, in November, we'll talk about the service animal policy. So we have a full agenda. So that's on the 17th.
Committee on Curriculum Evaluation, Dr. Murataki.
Yes, thank you very much. We haven't had a meeting since the last board, full board meeting. Our next meeting is actually, is this coming Monday, October 16th, and it will be at 5:30 PM in the Administration Building.
Keep in touch with the program here, I guess. Committee on Human Resources, Mrs. Ziem.
The Human Resources Committee has two motions to make tonight. The first motion is to approve Amanda Bastoni as the CTE co-director for Nashville High School North for a salary not to exceed $85,000 prorated for the rest of the fiscal year.
Second?
Seconded by Mrs. Oden. Does anybody have any comment? Anybody? Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. So Amanda, it's, let me see if I get this right, honesty before harmony, all right? So everything on this board is about five votes, okay? So for those of you watching at home to understand what happens, it's all about five votes. Personally, I will be voting against your nomination tonight. Eyeball to eyeball, I want you to know. I'm concerned we're going to saturate you and overwhelm you, okay? Having said that, completely, please prove me wrong, okay? Understand and know that in me, you have no greater ally for the CTE program. I will do anything and everything legally to assist you and the other director and the staff, the faculty, everybody and everybody to make CTE a success. I just want you to know that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. Ziem?
Yes, I would.
I'd like to.
We'll get to you in just a minute, Mrs. Hohensie.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I was probably talking too softly. I'll try to, I'll try to get more aggressive. I will be, as I said earlier, I will be voting against this, not because of any of your personal qualifications. Actually, you sell yourself very well. Actually, I wish I sold myself as well. So having said that, though, I think to double somebody's salary when they only have three years of experience, it is, I wish that this district would develop a mentoring program for candidates who come to us with less than the best practice recommended time, and so that maybe we could do a graduated salary scale so that we were able to keep you and let you grow into it a little more. But since we don't have that, and since I, I just, I just don't think we can afford that kind of money. So again, it's not about you. I look forward to going to the mountaintop with you as well. Thank you.
We'll just keep going this way. Mrs. Oden, did you have anything?
I just want to say I welcome you to the district, your energy, you bring a lot of creative ideas. Your building relationships with students is so critical, so I just want to thank you.
Mr. Mosher, did you have anything you wanted to comment on?
Well, I wanted to give you a little update on myself and my condition.
No, 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 don't go that way, Bill. We're just, we're just talking about the motion right now before us about the.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear Mr. Kaufman very well.
Okay. So we'll get back to you in a bit.
Okay.
Mrs. Hohensie.
Thank you. Filling the CTE director position is very important because our CTE program needs to be rebuilt and invigorated, but I think the nominee, although she's wonderful, inspiring, and energetic. But I think the nominee, although she's wonderful, inspiring and energetic and shows great promise, and I'd love to have her in our district, I don't think at this time she should direct our CTE program. So I will be voting against the nomination.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Twyver, do you have anything?
George.
Dr. Murtauki?
On your left.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get to you in just a minute, Bob. We're just kind of going around. If you can visualize where you are in the order you're over, sitting in front of Garth. So I'll get, I'll have you in just a minute. Uh, Dr. Murtauki?
Yes, thank you very much. Um, I would also like to welcome you to this district. I, um, I am very impressed with your combination of experience that you bring to this district. Uh, not only, you know, three years at the high school level where you were doing relevant work, but I'm particularly impressed by the relevant work that you did as an adjunct professor at that level of post-secondary education immediately after high school. With that blend and with, you know, what you told us during the interview about how that helped you to build the program at the previous high school, I recognize that that's the kind of synergy that I believe this district needs to be able to take advantage of. Um, I am very impressed by your energy, by your academic credentials, and I certainly look forward to having you join this district as the CTE director or co-director, because I guess we have two, one at North and one at South. In any case, I will be voting for accepting your nomination. Thank you.
Mr. Halliwell?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what all the hesitation is there. I, I tuned in to hear the entire interview. I was very impressed. Um, you know, sometimes you, there are certain people in a pool and, and, and I think we, we lucked out in getting somebody that I think has pretty diverse experience. So, um, I'm happy to vote for the nominee.
Thank you. Mr. McIntyre, you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I just want to say like, um, I think, I think you have what it takes to get kids interested in the program. Um, a lot of times we don't see a lot of that in school. Like we don't, we don't see a lot of the advertising for clubs and stuff, or not clubs, but these CTE classes. I know there's a big push for them, but I think that, I think that you would probably be able to do that, so.
You see, that comment confirms my thinking in this whole process. I didn't attend any of the other interviews other than this evening. I, I thought you were wonderful. Uh, terrific responses. I love your enthusiasm and, uh, and the way you communicate with kids and that's what we need. We need somebody that can, can communicate and make that connection with these students and draw them into these, uh, CTE programs because there's some wonderful opportunities for our students there. And so I certainly will be supporting your nomination. Uh, so everybody's had a chance to talk, so let's vote. A roll call, please.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Dr. Murtauki?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver votes yes. Mr. Halliwell?
Yes.
Mr. Moser?
Yes.
Mrs. Zee?
No.
Ms. Hohensie?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
This is 6-3?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yes, welcome. Uh, I'd like, have a second motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the personnel recommendations dated October 10th, 2017.
Second?
Segmented by Mrs. Oden. 10, 10, 2017. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of personnel?
Oh, no, don't touch.
I'll roll call.
Oh. And things are going so smoothly.
Yes. You ready?
And I didn't ask these three people if they had any, any concerns, but haven't heard anything from them, so let's vote.
Okay, Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Ms., Dr. Murtauki?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver votes yes. Mr. Halliwell?
Yes.
Mr. Moser?
Yes.
Mrs. Zee?
Yes.
Mrs. Hohensie?
I apologize, but I didn't hear, I didn't hear the motion.
The, the motion is to approve the personnel recommendations. It should have been in your packet.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Is that it, Mrs. Zee?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anybody have any liaison reports? King and hearing none. Unfinished business. Dr. Mosley, you have the floor.
All right. Um, a couple of things. One of the things we talked about had to pertaining to board governance. And I know that some people didn't like the word board governance. There was some discussion around committee team building, uh, board collaboration. So I, under those umbrellas, so to speak, um, one of the charges that the board asked me to do is to investigate some options for this to occur. So, um, one of the things that I did is I reached out to, it's called EAB, Educational Advisory Board. And what they can do for us as a district is to come in and facilitate that discussion around board governance. Um, what they would do is that they would talk with our school board members. They would talk to other key stakeholders, myself included, you know, um, anyone that has to, or would be involved around the board governance. And then we would start to really talk about roles and responsibilities. And also it ties nicely into, and they could assist us, and really laying that foundation of, of where we see ourselves as a board, building consensus, our roles and responsibilities in terms of, um, interacting with each other as a board. So there's a lot of opportunities that they could provide us. Uh, one of the things that they outlined, and I shared with all of the board members, it's just a, and I say a draft, it was a draft. Um, all of you should got, have that in your packet. And, excuse me. So that draft is designed to give the board an opportunity to see where all of this kind of fits into the larger picture. It, I think this is yours, Mr. Kaufman. Is that yours? So, um, it's one option, it's one option. Uh, this is a service that, um, offers a variety of opportunities if we choose to access this service for our, our, our school district. There is a annual fee of about, I want to say about $22,000, which, you know, can, uh, serve us well if we use it correctly or not. You know, this is just an opportunity in terms of what, um, the, what, what the board would like to do. Yesterday, late afternoon, I had a conversation with, um, Barton Christina. And he is the Nash, uh, New Hampshire School Board Executive Director. And so one of the things I asked him, and I know for full disclosure that the board here is not a member of that. Um, however, I did ask him, I said, is it possible for us as a board to just access just the facilitation of the governance or teamwork around the school board? And so he said, um, that he was not interested in just the, the district accessing that one component of the service they offered. In fact, they, they make the majority of their, their revenue and I would say their livelihood has to do with membership. So for us to access that, we would, we would need to join the, the New Hampshire School Board Association. And finally, Mr. Farrington, Chair Farrington actually shared with the board earlier, eight characteristics of a highly effective board. Um, I, when Mr. Farrington and I were sharing or talking about the agenda, we believed it would be just critical for the board to revisit that. Um, if he didn't read the article, it's fine, but they do have, uh, eight characteristics that are very similar to the, what I say, the themes that, that are mentioned in EAB and also some of the themes that are going on and mentioned at the National, uh, New Hampshire School Board. School Board.
Association.
I, I, I thought I heard someone talking. Okay. Um, school, now, uh, New Hampshire School Board Association. So, um, what I'm asking the board to do is to, to think about some options. I, I would like us to think about some opportunities for us in terms of next steps. I, I'd like us to, to consider some type of direction. By doing nothing is, is not going to be productive. Um, I know that there are some board members that said, you know, maybe Dr. Mosley, you can facilitate it. Then there were some board members that said, no, we just, we want you to be part of that process. So I brought to you, to the board, some options that could perhaps address all of the concerns that, that were expressed at our last meeting. Uh, there's no easy answer to this, but I thought it would be helpful for the board to consider, um, what's in front of them today and, and certainly start something in motion or maybe a, a healthy discussion around that.
If I could just briefly, uh, sooner or later it comes down, it comes around to money. You said $22,000 for EAB?
Yes.
And what would a membership for the School Board Association be?
It would be around $8,000?
Eight?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kaufman?
Thanks. So to follow up, if you use the consulting services of the School Board Association, what would the additional fee be?
I believe it's just a one annual fee of about $8,000.
And then they'll come in and facilitate whatever you want from them?
They'll come in, they'll, they'll talk with our, what we need around the facilitation of, of governance and certainly provide us with that feedback. So the answer to your question is yes.
Okay, and, and just to follow up on EAB, I did some amount of research on them based as, as well as I could. They're a company out of Washington DC. They seem to have canned programs and seminars that they run all the time. And it seemed to me that they were trying to fit us into their peg. When I went to their K-12 page and went to the bottom and I didn't really see a lot that was, they have nine topics that they, uh, that they have specialty in. K-12 is one of those nine. They have an extensive thing they talk about with healthcare and other areas, which are, uh, certainly not in our wheelhouse. I felt as though at the bottom of the page, when they listed their staff on the K-12 page, none of those people had any K-12 experience. So at least based what I saw from them on their website, they didn't impress me as a high-knowledge K-12 site, based on looking at half a dozen webpages. Uh, I did look on my own and I will send it to Dr. Mosley. I don't recall, you know, Google search, whatever term I entered, and ended up finding a company down in Boston. I honestly don't recall, I don't want to say the name, Public Something, anyway. But in Boston, and sure enough, they had several white papers that, uh, conveyed information philosophy. Oh, and my goodness, the person who wrote it had a CAG certification. So just, that was a lot more warm and fuzzy to me than what I saw over at EAB. I think, uh, personally, I think, uh, for us to get, get in motion, I, I'm sad to say that I think we're going to need a outside, outside help to get there. So, but, uh, as far as EAB goes, if, and I encourage everybody to go do the same research I did, and I will certainly get that information to Dr. Mosley about the other company. I don't know anything but what I saw on their website, uh, but they were regional. They were in, down in Boston. They had over several thousand school districts that they had worked with.
Okay, let's go around the table here before we go to the phones. Anybody else over here? No? Nothing? Anybody on the phones have any comment, uh, thoughts on the EAB?
Nothing in particular.
What did you say? Nothing in particular? Okay. All right.
Dr. Mosley? I wanted to clarify, I'm not here, I, I wasn't presenting just EAB. I also wanted us to consider the New Hampshire School Board Association as well. Um, I, just for the record, I, I tried, I, I said that I would reach out to all of my contact and resources. I did try to reach out to the Massachusetts School Board Association to give me a reference back, but because they don't, they, the Massachusetts Association for School Committees referred me back to New Hampshire because it was a conflict of, of interest and they don't, they, they have a no-competing clause. So just, uh, understand that I tried to reach over and get some people from Massachusetts over, so they referred me back to New Hampshire School Board Authority. So these are two options that I just, I present to the board. Um, whatever opportunity that you'd like to explore, I think it would, it's, it, it's worth considering. Um, certainly if there's some clarity that the board would like, just another option out there, I can ask a representative from both of these organizations to come in to provide some further clarification if you'd like.
Mrs. Zee?
I seem to remember that we had, back many years ago, maybe eight or 10 years ago anyway, we did go to, um, we actually went to the New Hampshire School Board Association for, uh, I want to say counseling. You can take that word at its, at its, at its.
It's okay.
At its word value. And, um, I, I guess I would, I guess my, I guess I would like to try something a little different. Uh, that's, and this one, the fact that they have, it appears from this document that they have, but it certainly can hurt to have them both come and, and give us an overview of what they, how they do. I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of listening to anybody. I mean, you know, some, you never know where you're going to find the nugget. And so if, if you want to bring them, you don't have any problem. But I, I, I just remember that it, uh, it, and to be honest with you, um, leadership is everything. And I believe, I sincerely believe that under your leadership, we're going to conquer this. I, I absolutely do.
Thank you.
Because I think the quiet wisdom that you bring is what we need. Thank you.
Okay, so what's the sense of the board? What do we want to do here? How do we want to go forward? Do we want to try and get something, some more specificity out of the School Board Association before we decide whether or not we want to bring those? Because it's, we're going to, we're asking somebody to come up from Washington if, if we ask this other group to come in, so.
Can I, can I put in here?
Sure, go ahead, Bill.
Uh, that was Mrs. Zee speaking, right? Was she discussing when we, when we had the off-site meetings and conquered with the, uh, association?
I, I believe that's what I'm referring to, yes.
Uh, I think that that was a, a very good idea because, uh, being in a neutral, uh, location and being able to freely, uh, discuss ideas and, uh, and, uh, look for outcomes on, uh, on problems, I think it was a good idea. Uh, gave us a chance to, uh, to really, uh, you know, reflect on what we were doing and, and what way we were going and to look to them for, you know, assistance in, in our endeavor. So, yeah, I think that was a good idea there, Sandra.
Okay. Thank you, Doris or Bob, either of you?
Um, I'm not too enthused about going to the New Hampshire School Boards Association. It'd be nice if there was something closer than Washington DC. Um, I'm open to listening to other districts that might have said that they could make a ref, uh, recommendation for some group to inquire or to look into somebody that had a, a good, um, opportunity with one of these consultants. But I just don't know enough about any one of them to, uh, to suggest which direction we should be going in.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Halliwell, are we going to say something?
No, I don't have anything to say.
Okay. Ms. Van Twyver?
I would love to get this started because I think we definitely need it. And I was wondering if maybe we just shouldn't talk, start with a discussion about the eight characteristics of a successful board and see if that doesn't help, um, foster a better organization for us. Uh, maybe a workshop on weekend, uh, Saturday or something where we just get together, everybody read the thing and maybe give us a test on it, see if we read it. Well, I just want to make sure people understand what's in it because I think it's an excellent article. A lot of the things that we discussed tonight were reflected in that.
I agree.
About which, um, things worked well for those successful districts and which things didn't work well for those unsi, not, less successful. Thank you.
Mr. Kaufman?
Thanks. Um, two choices is a start. I think we, uh, we're buying a brand-new car here. And I think we need to get a lot more information. Two vendors to me is inadequate. I would like to see five minimum, perhaps as many as 10, till we find the right company with the right personality that will. with the right personality that will enable us to work well. If you find a diamond in the rough with Ms. Bal, is it Balbone, Balboni?
Bastoni.
Bastoni, Amanda, tonight, well, I want to find a diamond that's already shining when it comes to a company that might offer consultative services to us. So I, I will, like I said, give you the name of the company I found locally. I'm sure through reference, like, I think Doris just mentioned, perhaps there's other school districts have gone through this process. We can get referrals and I think we owe it to ourselves to look a lot further. Thank you.
Dr. Murataki?
Yes, thank you. I actually believe that Ms. Van Twyver's suggestion is a good one. And may, might it be possible for a workshop or a discussion at least of, say, the eight factors be talked about as an agenda item on the board meeting on the 30th? Let me explain my reasoning here. I think that the citizens of the city will be choosing four school board members out of nine candidates, and I am not going to be one of those candidates. I think that a discussion of these eight characteristics, assuming that they are in fact a correct set of eight, might help the voters to make a pick of four that best fulfills what they believe satisfies those eight characteristics. There are nine candidates for four positions. This is one of the most heavily competed school board elections in Nashua in my living memory. So in any case, I think, could we do that? Is that something that might be worth a 20 to 30-minute discussion?
Well, let me just say, you know, when I look at things like that, I look at it and I look at the math and I say, well, eight characteristics, we have nine board members that are going to want to have some comment on it. And so you take, I'm seeing somebody with, doing numbers in the back. So you take nine board members wanting to comment on each of the eight characteristics and like, expect everybody's going to have more than a minute or two to say, it's going to be a fairly lengthy meeting. I'm so, sorry. It's going to be a very lengthy meeting. So if we wanted to do something like that, I would suggest that we maybe take two or three of the characteristics and do it over a series of meetings, but I don't know, we haven't talked about that, that approach. I was going to ask if the board wanted to buy off on a decision and give Dr. Mosley an opportunity between now and our next meeting to look at the organization that Howard found in Boston, you said? And try to get more specificity, specificity out of the School Boards Association and maybe call around and see if other districts have done this too. And, and give it a little more, you know, by ourselves sometimes, we don't have to make a decision tonight, I guess is what I'm saying. But I, I think that, you know, I have, I have wondered about that, but I'm just not sure how effective we can be unsupervised in, in having that kind of a discussion. But certainly, I don't think trying to do eight in an evening is, is at all workable. But that's just my opinion.
If I could follow up?
Yeah, sure.
What I had in mind was actually, you know, a brief presentation. The, the document you distributed entailed some heavy reading, and I had to actually pick through and say, okay, there's number one, there's number two. Maybe just a few view graphs, you know, in, in bold font, these are the eight. And just pop them up on a screen for us to look at and maybe have a brief discussion. We don't have to have every single member of the board comment.
I, I only smile because I know how those brief discussions go here. That's, that's all. Ms. Van Twyver?
I agree with Dr. Murataki. We have new members potentially, and I think people ought to understand what it entails to be a member of this board. It's not easy. It's time-consuming. And I think they ought to understand what it means to be, to run for Board of Education and to be elected to it and to serve. So I think that these eight items are very important, what successful means and what unsuccessful means.
You had, you had something?
I'll clarify a couple of things.
Sure.
I'm not asking the board to purchase anything right now. I just want to be clear. What I'm proposing the board do, and I have to, I'd be more than happy to do the investigation, is, for instance, if there's no interest in E A B at this point, just say, you know, Dr. Mosley, no interest in E A B, but we'd like to explore the New Hampshire School Board Association's resources. I can reach out to them, ask them to attend a board meeting, and then we can get clarity on whether you are interested in their services or not. I can do the same thing for E A B as well. It's, it's no commitment, no anything. You're just, right now, asking questions, investigating. And I can also reach out to the, the organization in Massachusetts, have them come in and, and the board can, can talk with that organization as well. The, my only question about having the discussion with, with the board on a Saturday with the eight characteristics, you need someone, not myself, but to really come in and facilitate that. You need someone to come in and sit with, and I'm pointing to the chair of the board and say, okay, this is the expectation of the workshop. This is where you should be. There are some, they call them like rules and regulations of engagement, you know, you know, you're going to listen, you're going to do this, you're going to do that. But more importantly, at the end of this work session, you're going to, I'm just using this as an example. For instance, at the end of this work session, you're going to eliminate, you're going to work from eight characteristics down to three. And then the following meeting, you'll talk about those three and get them down to one. And then the next meeting, what you'll do is that you really will focus your discussion and energy on developing some action steps as a board to get that one characteristic accomplished within, I'm making up a timeframe, three months. So you need someone to kind of set that framework, to facilitate that, to hold people accountable. So that's why that option for a Saturday workshop might be a challenge. I'm just making that suggestion.
Sure. Mr. Kaufman?
Thanks. I do have a question, though. If, let's say the board does hire an outside service provider to facilitate something, doesn't that have to be held in public?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Just want to be clear. So Mr. Mosier's comment earlier about going up to a distant place conquered and attending a meeting of the board would be inappropriate, right? Because we wouldn't have?
No, you could do that, you just, it would have to be.
You can't have a quorum?
No, you can have a quorum, but it would, it would have to be done in a public venue of some sort, so that if.
Oh, so we could have it remote, it's having a remote meeting?
I believe that's, yeah, I think.
But would it have to be televised? It would have to be recorded?
I don't think we're going to drag the E T V people somewhere, but I think that we would have to post it.
Just tell people we're meeting.
And the fact that we're, post it, that we were going to be meeting in, in a.
But doesn't have, doesn't the public have a right to attend that? Because there is no non-public.
Yes, yeah.
They won't drive up there or wherever it's going to be. Why not?
I would argue.
I'm going to interject here. We had the meetings off-site because they did not have to be posted. And they were, they were closed meetings, just the board members and the facilitators for the, from the School Board Association. And it was very productive and without having undue influence by any outside personnel that we were able to speak our minds and, and what was, you know, working well and what wasn't.
George, I'd like to.
And what we offered as a solution to those that were not working well. But the fact that it was off-site and non-public had worked out very well. And they even supplied some restorative.
Refreshments?
Riddles for us at the same time.
Okay. Mr. Hallwell, I think, has something on this.
Bob? You have?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I hate to disagree with my colleague, Mr. Mosier, but there were no non-public meetings of any kind. They were meetings that were held remotely. They were publicly noticed. As I recall, no one, there were no reporters that traveled to the meeting.
Encumbered.
But they, they were certainly were public meetings.
Yeah. Yeah. And that's what I would expect. That, that's a requirement that we would have to meet. We can run it by the attorneys, but I, I think under the right-to-know law, anything, any meeting of the board, unless it's something that falls under the right-to-know and the conversation is going to go into areas that are excluded from that, otherwise it would have to be publicly posted and open to anybody who wanted to go. But that's getting a little, a little bit ahead of ourselves. As I was thinking, is, do you think there's enough interest in the community? Should we post those, that characteristics? Can we post that on our website for people who might be interested?
We can post anything if that's what, yes, we can post it, but is that what the board wants?
I don't know. That's what I'm asking. What's the board think or not?
I think it's fine to have a discussion. I think it's fine to post it. Perhaps there's somebody in the community would like to facilitate us, facilitate it for us. Maybe one of our esteemed assistant superintendents. We could draw either of your names out of a hat.
Yeah.
That was a punishment.
So we can be really just putting pressure on either.
Okay. Moving right along. Hey, hey, you, go ahead.
I'm looking for some direction from the board around pursuing E A B, pursuing the national, the New Hampshire School Board Association. We want to make sure we get the right person that has, and this isn't any offense to Donna or, actually, they're going to be part of the discussion as well. They, we want to make sure we get the right person in there that, that has the skillset to facilitate this.
Are we talking, excuse me, aren't we talking two different things? One is the eight characteristics. That's, I think, simple that.
Just to share with the public, so the public knows what we're talking about.
Right. But as far as your suggestion of having a facilitated discussion around it and drilling down, doing one, going back, getting the next one in place, I think that's a valuable suggestion. I see that as one thing, and separately and independently, is the consulting service where they would be involved directly with us, strategic planning, whatever that service turns out to be.
So if I could, I think my sense of the board is that they, we'd like to have you go get a little more specificity from the School Board Association, look into the organization that Howard mentioned out of Boston, and if you can find a fourth, and, and give us a little more to choose from, perhaps.
Yeah. E A B, to me, didn't have a lot of K-12, and that's just my impression.
Is that, is that a fair?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So.
Agreed.
I'm good? Okay. Moving on to Elm Street, Mount Pleasant.
Excuse me. Can we just state what we agreed on so I can put it in the minutes?
We agreed to have Dr. Mosley go back to the School Boards Association for more specificity to contact the organization from Boston and to see if he can find a fourth.
Thank you.
Elm Street, Mount Pleasant, did you want to speak to that?
Yes, just, Mr. Hallwell actually spoke to this earlier. I just, there's some, there's been some discussion around Elm Street, Mount Pleasant, how much is it going to cost? What's the process? And so tomorrow, during the finance meeting, those, that information will be discussed publicly. This is more an FYI, and I know Mr. Hallwell already mentioned it earlier in the meeting, but I just think it's important for the public to know that that will be discussed. And you could attend the meeting or you could actually watch the, the finance meeting that starts at seven o'clock, six, is it? I thought it said.
Six thirty.
Six thirty, excuse me, six thirty.
Okay. Mr. Hallwell, did you want to add anything to that?
Bob, did you want to add anything? Bob?
Uh, well, only to say that we've been having public discussions about Elm Street and Mount Pleasant for some time now, so this is yet another opportunity, but nothing's been held in private. All these things have been public.
And they can be reviewed on E T V?
Well, we have the meeting minutes. I don't know about the videos.
No, that, yes, absolutely. Absolutely. And they're very easily accessible.
Okay.
It's coming from the I T expert over there. So you know they're easy.
Let's not start that. We're doing, we're moving along here. So now we come to new business, and first on the new business is a donation to Bicentennial Elementary School. Anybody have a motion to accept? Mrs.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Oden? Motion to accept the $1,000 donation to Bicentennial Elementary School. And who's that from?
Mentagraphics. Sorry. Mentagraphics Foundation.
Okay.
And it was because a, a parent had worked so many volunteer hours, they gave that donation, and, and the parent's name was, I believe, Priya De Souza.
Okay. We don't need all that in the motion. We're just going to say Mentagraphics.
So God is the maker?
Yes, and it'll be seconded by Mrs. Ziem.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Dr. Murataki?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver votes yes. Mr. Hallwell?
Yes.
Mr. Mosier?
Yes.
Mrs. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Ohensy?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Sounds unanimous, and thank you very much to Mentagraphics Foundation. And now I got to scroll back up here. The next motion is, okay, Dr. Mosley, you're up.
Real quick, what I, what I'm proposing to the board is that I, I would like to change the job descriptions for the assistant superintendents. Currently, Dr. McKinney is the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. Donna Fitzpatrick is the Assistant Superintendent of Accountability and Assessment. So that's their current titles right now. The way that their jobs are defined and described, in my mind, is where Dr. McKinney is responsible for elementary education and Donna Fitzpatrick is responsible for secondary education. And so to give you an example, one of the things that happens when we talk about assessments, we're talking about, when we talk about accountability, you know, if it's an elementary accountability discussion, that would fall under GART's responsibility. If it's a secondary discussion around state testing or anything like that, that would be something that Donna would, would be responsible for. So what I'm proposing, and I put a draft job description, and I say draft because ultimately what happens is that I say, you know, anything that, that, that needs to be done will be done. It's a draft where we're, it's constantly, I wouldn't say constantly evolving, but certainly something where we're looking to refine and make sure that we are addressing things that come down the pike, whether it's state testing, whether it's E L L requirements or anything like that. So what I'm proposing for Dr. McKinney would be Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Education, and for Donna Fitzpatrick would be Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education. The other reason why I'm proposing this is that when we have the public calling in and looking for point, point, I would say point person, but individuals responsible for different areas of, of supervision, sometimes I'm not in the district for various reasons, and they need to know and go to someone that can address their concerns. And so when they read Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, that doesn't necessarily give the general public, like, so that, is that secondary? Do I call Mr., Dr. McKinney? So by having these defined titles and really communicating, it really opens up the line of communication for the general public to communicate their concerns, but also to ask point individuals in the district if I'm not available as well. Dr. McKinney and, and Ms. Fitzpatrick collaborate well. There's no, you know, I don't see it as a power thing or anything like that. It's just for clarification purposes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. I appreciate you trying to focus, and I think that changing the titles helps. May I ask, is any other text changed within this document, or is it just the titles of the positions that have changed?
Just the, the text is, is the text. So nothing has changed since I, since that packet was delivered to you. There are.
I'm asking a different question.
Okay.
So you're saying this is a draft, so this includes new, this is a starting point of discussion? Okay.
So, I'm sorry, I interrupted.
So shouldn't this go to the H R committee for review? I mean, I, I did what I do. I just mark up documents when people put them in front of me. So I have several suggestions I'd like to make. Obviously, it's not something we're going to wordsmith here. Should not this be sent over to the appropriate committee for detailed discussion?
I think that would be an appropriate motion if. I think that would be an appropriate motion, but I just wanted to give everybody a chance to get clarification on what was being proposed here. Dr. Murataki?
Okay, so I've got a few questions and a, a comment. So, so basically, under this proposal, which I consider interesting, this would basically mean that our two assistant superintendents would be making a relatively clean break for K through five, and then from six through 12. But within the scope of those grade levels, they would both be responsible for everything, including curriculum development or, or, or program of studies, which is more applicable to the high schools, but we can, we can go there. It would also mean that the secondary education would be then totally responsible for CTE, as an example.
Yes, and actually, I thought that's the question, I'm sorry, point, that, that's the question I thought was going to be asked, and I did have a response for that, but go ahead.
All right, so correct me if I'm wrong, but we, we do have, I believe, embedded in a board policy, an organization chart. So I think maybe one thing that would need to be done would perhaps to be for the appropriate committee, which would end up with policy to approve a change to the organization chart, which I, I believe is in policy somewhere, you know, that's what my memory tells me. The inputs would likely come from HR, because there would be a lot of, of.
How about this change?
I think the responsibility descriptions for those two offices will change with, with this recommendation, which I believe I support. So I, I think, Mr. Farrington, you know, I'll leave it up to another board member to make that, that motion, but if, if in fact it needs a motion, I'm, I'm not certain it does. It could be that you, as chair, simply, you know.
Refer.
Refer to the appropriate first committee than to a second committee, and I suspect HR followed by policy is probably the appropriate path.
Anyone else? Ms. Van Twyver, what are your thoughts? Do you think it goes to policy or HR? I mean, the HR, I'm just looking at the policies now. HR is definitely is responsible for the organizational chart, changes the organizational chart. Mrs. Zee?
I guess I would ask Dr. Mosley if he feels that this is such a minor change, that that's not necessary, or is he happy with it being referred?
I really believe that this is such a minor change in, to get it, I supervise them, they're not part of the union, they're, they're what I, you know, I asked them to do, and some of it, many of it is overlap. I mean, one of the things we talked about CTE is that, you know, there's, Donna's going to be working with both the CTE directors and, and carrying that out with all of those responsibilities. All I'm saying to you, nothing is significantly changing in their job description except for their titles.
So I make a motion that we approve it as it was presented by Dr. Mosley.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Oden. Is there any discussion? Mr. Kaufman.
I have to disagree with my colleagues. We have the responsibility of approving the job description. Dr. Mosley did say that this is new text and that the titles are changed. I was given a draft document, I was asked to review a draft document, and in my earlier comments, and the chair agreed, that it should be sent to the appropriate committee and follow our process. I think, in fact, one of the processes say that the board cannot adopt a policy change at a board meeting, that it has to go through the committee, unless it's an emergency kind of a thing. So I would ask that, I don't know, Ms. Van Twyver, do you have a recollection of something like that?
Yes, I do, and I believe it should go to HR. I was a little surprised that it didn't, and then eventually if it requires a change to policy. But it is HR's responsibility for looking at these things.
Thank you. So I, I would vote against the motion to take immediate action, or, yeah, just vote against the motion when it becomes presented.
Anybody else around the table? The motion was to approve it as presented this evening by Mrs. Zee, seconded by Mrs. Oden, Dr. Murataki.
Yes, actually, I will support Mrs. Zee's motion, and, and here's why. I think that an agile organization has to be able to have the executive of that organization, which is the superintendent in this case, you know, to be able to make these types of adjustments within the operation of the people under his direct supervision. Now, once we let this, you know, actually happen, I believe that it will then inform the district as to what the changes should be in a written job description for the two assistant superintendents, which can then be captured by the HR and then forwarded as required to the policy committee for becoming embedded in policy. In other words, this is something like, you know, does the cart cover the horse or does it go the other way? You, you basically allow the real world to inform what you're doing. It's kind of like an ISO thing. In, in ISO 9000, you basically, you, you, you write what you do, and then, or you say what you do, then you do what you say. It's not a, you write what you think you're going to be doing, and then you try to live with what you write. That doesn't tend to work very well. Responsive and flexible organizations often go ahead and do something they believe is reasonable, and then capture what works, and, and then embody that into policies and regulations. And that's, for that reason, I will support Mrs. Zee's motion.
Any thoughts on the phones? Is it getting late in Germany?
It's late here.
Okay, so we, Mrs. Oden.
I just want to say, our district worked like this at one time. We had an assistant superintendent for the secondary level, an assistant superintendent for the elementary level. I found it worked very well. It's a large district. We have two assistant superintendents. One has a lot of secondary experience, and one has a lot of elementary experience. To me, this makes sense, and I think it will help them focus on what they're doing rather than the entire district. So I appreciate Dr. Mosley looking at this and, and changing it. I think it's, I think it's long overdue.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, we have a motion before us, and the motion is to approve the two job descriptions as presented this evening. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Oden.
Yes.
Dr. Murataki?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver votes no. Uh, Mr. Hollowell?
Yes. Dr. Murataki?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver votes no.
Bob?
Mr. Hollowell?
Yes.
Turn your TV down, Bob. To Mosher.
I vote no.
Mrs. Zee?
Yes.
Ms. Ohensie?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Seven-two.
Motion passes seven-two.
So, may I ask a question?
Six-three.
Six-three.
So, and I, I appreciate Dr. Murataki's comment about being an agile organization, and there's some things that, you know, I describe us as an aircraft carrier, it's very hard to stop or turn. But if we do have policies, I think we should follow them, and if we're going to become an agile organization, that should be as a deliberate, as the result of a deliberative process to do it, so.
We just finished, we just finished that discussion.
I'm sorry, was I speaking?
Well, you, you are speaking here, and we have.
Did I have the floor when I was speaking?
Well, you're going to lose it here in a minute, because we have concluded that conversation. You can save this for your board member comments, if you don't mind.
Thank you.
But I'd just like to move forward on the rest of the new business, if we could. Upcoming curriculum and evaluation committee meeting topics. Who's this, who's is this?
We'll, we'll be, we'll be, we'll be, we'll be having a discussion on that later this week. I just arranged with.
I'm not sure where it's coming from next. Okay, so we're, that's it? This was on the agenda, and so we're going to, you're going to talk about that?
In curriculum or?
In curriculum?
Yes.
Okay. Well, then that moves us right on to the paraeducator tentative agreement approval, and since I have a conflict, I'm going to turn this part of the program over to Ms. Van Twyver.
Thank you, Mr. Farrington. The next order of business is the paraeducator tentative agreement approval. Chair would entertain a motion to approve this.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes. Yes.
I would like to move to approve the agreement between the paraeducators and the Nashville
School Board.
Is there a second? Mrs. Oden, seconded motion. Is there any discussion? Mr. Kaufman?
Do we need to go into non-public to have this conversation? Because I have some questions. I've forwarded Dr. Mosley, I have made a request for information. That's not in the packet, and I hope it will be provided.
Yeah, yes, so can I jump in?
Yep.
So if, if Mr. Kaufman has questions, and I know he did, then we would need to go into non-public.
Chair would entertain a motion to go into non-public?
Move to go into non-public, please.
Is there a second? I'll second it for the purpose of discussion. All those in favors?
We need the roll call.
Roll call. Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Dr. Murataki?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver votes yes. Mr. Hollowell?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Zee?
Yes.
Mr., Mrs. Ohensie?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
I can't vote, but I'm not, I'm not sure that this is procedurally correct. I'm, I almost think that for, if you're going to talk negotiations, you have to recess and have a non-meeting, but, I mean, because you have to have a reason to go into non-public session. I don't mean to be a stickler on all of this.
Well, who are us?
So having said that, I'm going to leave.
Okay, goodbye.
So, Mr. Hollowell, what is your opinion on the?
So, I, I suppose we could have gone into a non-meeting, you know, for negotiations, but I, I don't, I don't think it's a big deal.
I don't either, to be honest with you.
Thank you.
The motion carried, passed, and we're in non-public at nine fifty-five. Well, and Zee, seal the minutes. Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Dr. Murataki?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver votes yes. Mr. Hollowell?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Zee?
Yes.
Mrs. Ohensie?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Uh, ministers sealed. Now, we're back to the motion to, um, where am I? There's my piece of paper.
Ms. Van Twyver, can I speak to the motion?
Yes, you may, sir.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Hollowell.
Okay, um, so just a couple things. So I, I was the, the board representative for negotiating the contract with the PARRS. I think we had a pretty productive discussion throughout our negotiations. I like this contract for several reasons. One, it, it puts us on a path that allows us to do steps so that we don't run into the issues where steps are taken away, and that causes all kinds of consternation in, in the union about how, what that means for the future. I also think an important factor here is healthcare for PARRS, and we've done two things in that regard. One, for the single-person plan, for new members, for new people that have just started as PARRS, they started as low as sixty percent co-pays, so they were paying forty percent of the cost of their single-person plan. We've essentially eliminated that for new employees. I think that will be a benefit to us in trying to hire new paraeducators. And then, near the end of the contract, we're putting a cap on the total amount of money that PARRS need to pay towards two-person and family plans, and that cap will continue in perpetuity, basically, until the PARRS were to come to some kind of parity, so to speak, for twenty percent for two-person or family plans, which is the, the norm in the entire city. Nobody else has that poor a, a coverage, so I'm, I'm happy that we're able to start to address that issue, and, and it will be addressed over time. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there any more discussion on the motion with Mrs. Zee?
I would just like to thank Mr. Hollowell for his hard work and for coming up with what appears to be the beginning of, of getting to that mountaintop I've been talking about. Thank you.
Mrs. Oden?
I'm glad we were able to come to an agreement here and address some issues that needed to be addressed. I don't think most people realize how important paraprofessionals are to the education of our students. I don't think they realize how hard they work. They're absolutely critical in helping us meet IEPs, Individualized Education Plan, for students that have an IEP, that are legal documents. And more and more, we're finding that we have more and more students that have IEPs, and these people work extremely hard. They're valuable to, to the, to the children, to the teachers, to the classrooms. So I, I just want to say, I wish it could be more, because I know how hard they work. When I went back to education, I went back as a para and worked as a year and a half, for a year and a half as a para, and I, I understand what they do and how hard it is. So I, I just want people to understand this is very well-deserved, so thank you to all the PARRS.
Yes, thank you.
Is there any more discussion? The vote is on approval of the contract between the PARRS and the district. Mrs. Oden, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dr. Murataki?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver votes yes. Mr. Hollowell?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Zee?
Yes.
Ms. Ohensie?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington abstains. Motion carries, eight-one. Eight-zero, one abstains, station. Absence, one of those things, anyways. Congratulations, and the ball is back in your court.
Thank you. That brings us to public comment.
Oh, can I have?
I'm sorry, you've got something?
Yeah, I would just like to add, under new business and announcement, I happen to be thinking about it tonight, the new community center at the old fire station in front of Dr. Crisp, it was initiated by my brother's keeper. They will be holding their grand opening on Saturday, October the 28th, from 10 to 3:00. I hope everybody will put it on their calendar. I'm, I'm doing it this far in advance, because sometimes I know calendars get overloaded. But I think it's been a wonderful, I think it will encourage you to see, and I think if we can get the public behind it, it'll go even faster and better, and so I would encourage everybody to come out and reward the people who've been working really hard on this by supporting it, and the way you do that is by showing up. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else, new business? Mrs. Oden? Okay, public comment? It's like the same gentleman from earlier this evening.
Adam Marqu, Ford Jolene, president of the union. Wanted to thank the board for unanimous vote tonight on the para-contract. Agreed with Mr. Hollowell that it fixes some problems, helps us move forward to continue to address the concerns the PARRS have, especially their health insurance, but this is a great stepping stone, a building blocks for that. And to echo what Mrs. Oden said, I think the paraeducators in our district are the most underappreciated staff we have. most underappreciated staff we have. There is so much that they do every day that may not be recognized, because it's things that you wouldn't expect them to do, that they go above and beyond. You know, I think about when I was teaching and the para that worked side by side with me, and, you know, there are days that I don't think I would have survived teaching had it not been for the support of the para, who may have been in there for two students but worked with everyone, did what needed to be done, and that goes for all of them. So I'm glad we have a contract off to the board of Alderman together to rally for our people. Thank you.
Thank you. Since that is the only person from the public here, I guess that's it for public comment. No, thank you very much for the offer, but thank you, Adam. We'll go around the room. Board member comments? We'll start with Mr. Mosher.
Thank you very much. You know, I appreciate the opportunity to participate remotely as we have, in both the committee and in the board meetings. And it's difficult getting my physical and mental things all regroup to consider everything that I'm neglecting at home. Thank goodness my wife is there to take care of it, but I just wanted to say that the break that I had in my hip was a very nasty one. And this was all over a bologna sandwich on a, on a, on a bagel, so watch out for those bagels, guys, they can be tough on your body. The stay in the hospital and the rehab, it's been difficult trying to learn to walk all over again. But things are moving along quite well, and maybe just a couple more weeks, two or three, that I'll be back in a saddle again and able to attend physically and my responsibilities. But thank you for your diligence and for the combined intelligence that goes into putting things together, and I hope I'll be back there very soon.
Thank you for the caution on the bagel and bologna. Mrs. Ohensie.
Thank you for letting me participate tonight, and I'm glad we resolved the contract with the PARRAS, and hopefully we'll move on to the next one.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Halliwell?
Mr. Halliwell, do you have some final comments?
That's, we'll take that as his final comment.
Good night.
Okay. So now we come around here, the room. Final comments? Mrs. Oden.
Yes, I just want to acknowledge and thank the nurse over at Dr. Crisp, Robin Abodeely. She participated in a fundraiser in Manchester called Over the Edge, and she went down, I think it was 26 stories rappelling down. It was just amazing. Somebody who's afraid of height, I have enormous respect for her doing that. And she raised over $12,000 for the Dental Connection. The Dental Connection supports and helps those families that cannot afford dental work when it's needed so badly. I know, teaching in a Title I school, when these students come in and they say, "My mouth is sore, the jar is out," and they have a tooth that's infected or needs work or needs pulling, the Dental Connection has been there. They come to the school, they pick up the students after the parents fill out the permission. What I didn't realize, what I learned from her, that adults also in need of services can use the Dental Connection. So I want to, I want to acknowledge and thank her. Also, I want to congratulate Cameron on getting inducted into the John Locke Society, and had a great time over at Dr. Crisp on their new playground. Great dedication, a lot of people working together to provide that, and, you know, I do have pictures of the assistant superintendent trying some of those little things, and she approved of some of the equipment they had. So congratulations to Dr. Crisp. That's been a long time coming, that new playground, so.
Okay. Mrs. Zee.
The only thing I wanted to say was to Mr. Halliwell, I guess I missed him, but he didn't sound like he feels too well, and he's been a, he's a great, he's a great school board member, and I wish him best wishes in getting rid of that bug, whatever it is, because he didn't sound like he felt too good. Thank you.
Mr. Kaufman.
Thanks. I'm pleased to learn that we were able to make progress on a long-term contractual issue. You know, we're on the board, we get, like I say, we see the good, the bad, and the ugly. And sometimes we go down these rabbit holes trying to solve big problems, like the teacher's contract. I'm glad that Mr. Halliwell was able to work with the union to get the para-contract at a stable and constructive place, and I was pleased to vote for it. I do want to add one comment to what Mr. Markou said, and let's not, board members forget that the substitute teachers and the TIA's are not represented by unions, and it's up to us to make sure they get a raise. They don't have a negotiation helper, as it were. Other than that, I really would love to have a nimble organization, but as a process rat that I've self-described myself many times, I think we need to follow our process. If we need to modify the process to enable our nimbleness, I'm all in favor of doing that. But I think we need to go through the committee structure that we have, because it's a, it was a draft. It wasn't a title change. There was text that got changed in the process. That's what Dr. Mosley said. We should have reviewed it, or rather, we should have referred it to committee. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Murataki.
Yes, thank you very much. I am, oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 no. We have a little thing going on here.
Oh, all right. Yes, in any case, I am very pleased to welcome Amanda Bastoni to the district. I like what I see going on, and I think that she will be an important and vibrant element in, in basically bringing, you know, CTE and career education and career pathways, you know, to our front step here in this district, and I think that's a very important addition to our key staff. I'm also happy to see that we signed the para-contract. I think it's been a long time coming, and I think it represents a good step forward. So thank you very much.
You got something?
I do. I have lots of something.
Go ahead, okay, go ahead.
First of all, I'm very pleased with the hiring of Amanda Bastoni, too. I think she's going to be a great asset to us. I look forward to talking with her. I'm very proud of Cam and his accomplishment. We have had nothing but the best student members of this board ever. Every one of them has done something outstanding, and I just can't get over how great they are. I also am thankful for the contract being signed, and I appreciate, after negotiating with the teachers' union, how much effort goes into that, and I thank both the union and the, our negotiating team for coming up with this contract that seems to satisfy I'm thank you, Mrs. Oden, for talking about the nurse from Dr. Crisp, and I'm married to her name, Abodeely. I watched that video. That woman's got a lot of guts. I can't believe that she actually did that, and we have a few other people, like former senator, that did it, too, and it was a great feat for those people. I just love that. I'd never do it, though.
It's fun.
I come down too fast. And, Dr. Mosley, I hope that you don't take offense at my voting no for your policy. You helped with my committee, and I believe the HR committee deserves the same respect that we bring those things to them for what they're responsible for. So I think we've had a pretty long meeting tonight, and I'm ready to go home.
Wait a minute. I haven't had my turn.
Well, I can't call for a roll.
Okay. Everything has been said, and then I was thinking this evening, I meant to say at our last meeting, and I don't think I did, I attended the ribbon-cutting at the credit union at South, Jean Dark, and did everybody receive in their packets of, okay, there was a little notebook that came from them. I think it's going to be a great opportunity for South. I spoke to the lady who was their representative about the possibility of maybe doing it here. They have a limited number, but I think maybe next year will be an opportunity that we can, we can approach them on that. And there's an educational component, too. They have, they come into the school, I think they've already talked to some of the people in our district, but they come in and they have different programs on personal finance, all the way from K through 12th grade, that they'll come in and have somebody come in and talk to students about that. So I think that's a, it's a partnership of sorts, and I think it's a great opportunity in as regards that curriculum piece, but also having access to a credit union in two schools. I think it's going to be great. And then I'm done. Next meeting is Monday, October 30th. Motion? By Mr. Kaufman, seconded by Mrs. Oden. All those in favor now. Has everybody gone home? Doris, are you still there?
I'm still here.
Okay, then roll call.
Oh, you've got to be kidding me. Put my papers away. All right.
We'll just go around the table. Mrs. Oden.
Yes.
Mrs. Zee.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mr. Farrington, yes. Ms. Van Twyver.
Yes.
Dr. Murataki.
Yes.
Mrs. Ohensie.
Yes.
Mr. Mosher.
Yes.
And Mr. Halliwell's gone to bed. Okay, we are adjourned. It is 10:35.